This conference will now be recorded.
The time being four forty-four P. M. I'd like to call the meeting of June first, two thousand and twenty-three to order. First order business is the Fudge of Legions.
Fudge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we like to make a motion to accept a twenty-dollar donation from the Naughton Family Trust to the Tilton Senior Center.
Second.
Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much to the Naughton Family Trust. Okay. Mark, are you online with us now?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you hear us?
Mark, can you hear us?
Can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
Should be.
Mark, go ahead and say something to us. No, we still can't hear you.
Do you have your mic volume all the way up?
Yep.
You could try disconnecting and reconnecting again, perhaps?
Say something to us again.
I think he's he's in process of leaving and reconnecting. Okay, can you hear us? There you go.
I can hear you.
Okay, all right. So online with us is Mark Duchaine from Alpine Environmental. He's gonna let us know what's happening on downstairs.
Good afternoon, Board. Genie and I have been able to chat a little bit with regards to electrician, I guess. The first thing I'd like to do is just go over the scope of work that what I saw during my travels up to Tilton. There's quite an extensive bit of work that needs to be taken care of, and obviously it's a fully functioning town hall. So the concern that I have and and the reason for the one lump sum proposal is the steel beam, basically at the town collectors, tax collectors, the partition does not go fully to the deck. And it was observed that there was some, from what I could tell from the limited view, that there was some damage over on to the east of that beam. So I felt it would be prudent to make sure that we carried the whole entire first floor versus splitting it off at the at the beam and then going west towards School Street. So our scope would be to remove the suspended ceiling, remove the tin ceiling that has the lead component, and then also remove any plaster and lath up to the joists. The light fixtures would need to be disconnected. We would clean those, make sure that those are in a safe condition to then return to town. And then you guys can reinstall, should you want to reinstall or dispose of as as of waste at a later date. I can go through the proposal line by line, but it may be easier to maybe field any questions that you may have.
Board, at this time, does anyone have any questions?
I don't see a copy of it.
We got it last week. It looks like this, John.
That one?
Yeah.
It's Alpine.
You got it. Catherine, that's the other one.
It's that one on your left, Catherine.
Oh, that's the next one. So, sir.
Yes, sir.
I heard you talk about doing the entire first floor. I think that's a logistical nightmare on our end.
Not going to disagree with you.
What is the what is the condition? I know it's gonna cost more to have you mobilized twice. But what is the condition of the west side of the building? Is it like the east side where it's all fallen out, or?
There was some, yeah, thanks for the that. There is some paneling that I saw when I was when I lifted tiles by the town clerk, by the Dutch door, by the town clerk's office. I lifted a tile there. And then I also lifted a tile more towards the waiting room. I can try. Let me see if I can share a picture with you. Bear with me one second here. There did appear to be some of the metal that was coming down. I couldn't necessarily tell if there was plaster also falling. But I think in the meeting from two weeks ago, it was also observed, I want to say, over maybe the copier room, if I'm not mistaken, which I believe is on the western half of your
Yes.
facility next to the next to the Lula that you guys have. I think on the drawing in the historic building assessment, it's called storage, but I believe it's a fully functioning copier room. I did not bring up a tile in that area. But I'd be more than happy to reassess. But it did. It did appear, obviously, the, you know, the you could see that there was smoke damage, previous smoke damage on the ceiling tiles, on the tin ceiling, I should say, from its past life, or its current its current life. And it looked like there was some tiles that were actually coming down. Now, the other problem that I have with that, and as I explained to Genie, was there's no axiom or continuation or wall partition that actually would act as a barrier where we could then, I mean, we could, we could certainly tent and clip on to the steel and then seal at the top and drop and do half of that. But there the suspended ceiling continues right on through into that area. So some type of axiom trim panel or some other type of finishing would have to be completed by someone else after we were to do any work from the western, from the the steel support beam to the western portion of the building. Not to say it can be can't be done. It's just you have a free-floating partition that does not complete up to or go past the the current suspended ceiling. Now, that condition also takes goes in from, I can put my head up in the waiting room and look all the way back over to the Administrative Assistance Office where the ceiling is collapsing from that one point. So from a safety standpoint on our end, it can be done. However, if we're already, yeah, if we're already mobilizing, what is the cost savings? I don't think the cost savings is twenty thousand dollars because you're not adding that much square footage. You're already, you've already got the cans. You've already got the the manpower on site. It certainly could be looked at, but in our estimation, if if we're gonna do this, the right way to do it is to remove it completely all at once, even though it is a logistical nightmare for you guys to have to be out of the building. Or out of the first floor.
How long are you talking about? If you were to do the entire floor, what would it be?
Let me look.
Three weeks.
So I think we had initially discussed a period of two and a half to three and a half weeks with the hopes that we would be, you know, right at that two and a half week mark. But the problem is, is that, as you know, we're dealing with surfaces up there that we don't know the complete picture until we actually open up the entire ceiling. So I would rather tell you three and a half weeks and get it done in two and a half. However, that's our estimation is we would be in there for at least two and a half weeks. And that's Monday through Friday. That's not running. That's, you know, basically, you've got, you know, roughly thirteen, thirteen, fourteen business days, not including weekends. Weekends could be added on, but we're running this project as a Monday through Friday project to help with a cost impact versus having to put staff up there at the time and a half on a Saturday and double time on a Sunday. It may be less expensive to do it that way for the town, which I would be more than happy to explore because there's a cost associated with you guys having to relocate.
All right. Catherine, do you have any questions? All right, go ahead.
So we have talked about keeping the second floor open while this project is being done. Is, do you see that as feasible?
Genie and I have actually talked about that, and the major concern with having people on the second floor would be the electrical, which it sounds like the electrician can separate the first floor and the second floor and also provide us temporary power so that we can run our negative air machines and lighting and and whatnot, and water heaters for the decontamination units. So if electrical can be locked out and tagged out on the first floor level and power can still be on on the second floor, I really don't see it being an issue. The only other thing that I would bring up as far as something for the town to look at would be the means of egress and talking with the fire chief to make sure that the means of egress is adequate. I believe with the north tower, with the north stair tower and the south tower, we would be looking to block off the south stair. So that would make it inaccessible from basically that line, but I believe, if I'm not mistaken, we have a small portion in that south entry vestibule that we could actually block off that one doorway. And it may be adequate where you guys could enter and exit from that on an emergency basis. But your main entry would be off of the School Street, the School Street entrance in the north stair, which is completely separated by the the wall between the finance office and the north stair tower. Therefore, we can then put the first floor under containment.
So is it possible for you to?
Catherine, can you talk in the mic, please? No, you can pick it up.
I know. I was talking, yeah.
I know, but you can. You could pick it up and talk to him.
Is it possible for you to start the project in the front stairway so that perhaps Town Hall, you know, we might close for two days while you get beyond that area? And then have that open again? The back stairwell or the stairwell off of School Street would be fine for employees to ingress and egress. I don't know about customers.
Right. And and that's something where it's worth a look to see if logistically we can do that. It it might be a, it might be a possibility. The other thing is, I I'm trying to look, I'm trying to pull up pictures as we're talking here.
Because we do have two doorways on that side, one directly into the hall in front of the stairs, and of course, the other one goes into the town clerk main office, so.
Yep, yep. And I'm trying to pull up a picture of that ceiling because I know in the stair tower, in the south stair tower, it's a hard ceiling. So we would not be accessing over the south stairs. So the south stair all the way down to the first floor would be fine. I just don't, I'm trying to see if I got that east entry vestibule picture here.
Do you need, do you need to show any pictures, Mark? I can make you, if you want to share. Okay, let me know.
Thank you, Tim. So in the long and the short is, it's it's possible. I don't want to say it's not possible. It's just a matter of what it would take to to go from there. We've got, okay, here's. I do, Tim, I do have a picture of the west of the or east of the beam where this was taken, and you can tell that the tile, the tin is actually, let's see.
If you want to click the share button at the bottom of your screen and then just pick your window, we should see it.
Yep. Okay, so this is, this is one of the tin ceilings. Can you see that?
Yep.
Yes.
So that is east of that beam. So that tin, this picture is taken taken from the easterly side, more towards the the inn on the opposite side of of that beam.
East of.
So
No, no.
This is, this is more like by the this is, I believe, and and I'm going from memory, but I believe this is more towards the waiting room area, looking back towards the tax collector's office. So this this tin has detached from its framing. Again, I, it's, you can see there's some plaster scatter on the on the insulation itself from it breaking away, but it's it's very hard to tell, you know, the exact extent of, you know, what has broken away.
Catherine, are you finished with questions? Are you still more?
Well, I think we need to proceed with the idea we need to be able to use the second floor. This project, as far as removing the lead, et cetera, et cetera, and correcting, this is maybe two and a half to three and a half weeks. But when that's done, we still have
Right.
electricians, carpenters.
Reconstruction, right.
So you're probably looking at
Eight weeks or so.
Yeah, five, six, eight weeks of a project. It can't be out of Town Hall that long.
Right.
So even if we had to close for, you know, maybe a Thursday and a Friday for them to be able to do that front part and get away from it and then tend us out of it, be able to use the second floor, I think that's extremely important.
Okay. John, do you have questions? No? Okay, Scott?
No.
No? Joe, anymore?
No.
All right, I think that
I have one question. You have a crew already that can complete that project in three and a half weeks?
So I'm missing the question.
If you
Do I have eight people sitting around waiting to go up there?
Yeah. It's tough getting good people. Do you have a good crew?
So we have a crew of, we have, yeah, I would say, so if if I didn't have a good crew, I wouldn't be sitting here, right? We're on projects all over New England. We just completed one at at Aditash or a second phase, if you will, up at Aditash Mountain Resort for some asbestos. We're on a large project with the government at the National Park Service doing lead mold and asbestos in individual historic homes. Yeah, we we kind of, this is, this is right up our alley, if you will. I've done projects as small as nine hundred bucks, and I just completed a clean demolition project in Rochester, New Hampshire for six hour for North Branch Construction, which the contract value was close to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So we we run the gamut as far as, you know, projects and value. And we also obviously hire the staff that allows us to do that. So in a project like this, scheduling is always tough. So once we get a go-ahead, we then obviously talk to operations. They know that this project is in the wings. They know that this project is obviously time-sensitive. So we would do everything in our power to obviously commit as fast as possible and commit the crew that we need. My honest assessment would be to try and get all hands on deck to get my portion done as fast and as safely and efficiently as possible without further delay on your end. But I also need to make sure that we're using our own employees as far as handling all of the lead work that needs to be done because at the bottom, at the end of the day, realistically, what we have here is potential lead exposure. And one thing that I felt was very important, and I don't know if you saw it in the proposal, but I actually have, I budgeted some initial lead wipes to be done to make sure that there was where we're starting as far as a baseline goes, to make sure that we're gonna capture any potential contaminants that have already dropped from the ceiling or maybe got ground in the carpet or on window sills and floors and you name it. So there is that, there is that in there, and that gives us basically a good roadmap of where we need to go and how we need to clean it. And then how do we properly dispose of what's still attached and what's still in the ceiling? So. Any other questions, or did that answer your question?
I think that answered the question, but Genie has her hand up, so.
Yeah, Mark, you also indicated that you would be requiring additional testing for asbestos. I did get a quote on that. I forwarded that to you from the Lawson Group, and they said, so you would, you would have to, I guess, build that in. That's three or four days of turnaround. So that that's got to be accounted for as well. Unless unless you say you're gonna start in two weeks and we get that that niche app analysis done. But I just don't want to forget that because that's a piece of it, correct?
It's absolutely a piece of it, Genie. And the timeframe of taking the samples and getting them cleared, the realistically, we're looking at a surface that probably does not contain asbestos. However, we need to obviously test that surface so that we can ensure that we're disposing of the the materials the proper way. Building that in there, if there were to be asbestos, we could talk to the state and see about jumping notification if it was asbestos. But then that opens up a whole new, you know, project if it's if it's asbestos versus lead, because we would have a lead component and then we would have an asbestos component. I'm fairly confident that, you know, when you see horsehair plaster, horsehair plaster does not contain asbestos usually. That's why they used horsehair versus the asbestos. You see the asbestos being used in plaster after they stopped using horsehair because of the durability and the rigidity of the asbestos fibers. The stuff is pretty durable and therefore created a decent building material, if you will. The problem is, is that we now know the long-term effects of exposure to asbestos is bad for us, so.
Mark, it looks like you have an employee of your company that raised their hand.
That is Ron Pike. That is the president of the of the company. So he's traveling and he wanted to join in, so it looks like he's got something.
Hello, yeah, hi, hi, thanks for taking me. I just had a quick, I'm sorry, I'm in my car, so I can't be there in a little more personally. But I just wanted to echo what what Mark said to to in in, as far as the actual schedule and manpower goes, yeah, I'm here to personally commit to you that if we put a schedule down, we'll make that schedule or or we will beat that schedule, so. I want to, you know, basically assure you of any concerns you might have on that. And also, yeah, regarding the asbestos as due diligence to make sure that there is very, it'd be highly unlikely, but we want to make sure that the sufficient testing has been made so that we don't risk having a problem. We don't want to, we don't want to be in the the Conia newspapers as being the guys who dumped asbestos all over Town Hall and Tilton. So we want to make sure that that's being properly properly vetted out and tested. Incredibly unlikely that it's going to be any horsehair plaster, but we want to make sure that the proper surveys are being done.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mark at this time? If not, thank you, Mark, very much.
Thank you, Pat. Thank you, Tim.
All right, okay. Appreciate you being on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
All right. The time being five fifteen approximately. We do have Chris Pryor here from Envirovantage, and he is physically here, so he can come on up to the table and be in the hot seat for a little bit. All right. So this is, it looks like this one, this one here. It'd be in the back. Yep. Right there.
Oh, thank you very much. Yeah, very good.
Okay, Chris, you have the you have the floor.
I have the floor.
Yep.
Phone is on. I assume you can hear me.
Yes, you gotta just talk into it.
Will do, will do. So what I will say is, Mark provided a very good overview of the the scope of work. I think if you read our two proposals, you'll see that they are extremely similar. You have received pricing from two very well-qualified competent companies. From time to time, we, depending on schedules, share work with each other. We've we've known Ron and Mark for for years. We do similar-sized projects all the way down from the nine hundreds. We have over a hundred and ten employees, so that gives us the capability. We are on projects that exceed tens of millions of dollars. So this this project is also well well within our wheelhouse. I don't know if you want to ask me questions. As I was sitting in the audience, I I heard some that I I can elaborate on as far as timeframe. When I wrote this proposal, I had told Genie that it was a three-week timeframe for us to complete the entire first floor. Let's see, one of the questions about the use of the second floor, if that's a possibility, I see that as a possibility if the electrical can be shut off and made safe on the on the first floor and there's there its own component. The only thing that the town will struggle with is, I think you may lose some of your The only thing that the town will struggle with is I think you may lose some of your ADA compliance because the uh elevator will be in our work zone with no way to exclude it from our work zones.
Right.
Uh, as far as uh egress, um, yes, the uh school street uh stairwell would be accessible. Here, this one uh going out onto the main street, um, we could define that work area to, so that um we're in and out in a quick period of time. It can be isolated, so it could still be used. Uh, to your point about, is there a way to, you know, keep this second floor open? So um, I'm happy to answer any direct questions.
Chris, I have one uh question. The difference between the cleanup of the tiles is taking in the tiles and processing the tiles and so on is very different from the process of um yeah, uh Alpine.
Okay.
So wh- what's the diff- what's the major difference there?
Yeah, so uh, the, the tin can actually be processed as a recycled uh material. Um, there, you know, this is unlike a project that we just completed down in Derry for a church where it was an exposed tin ceiling that was painted with lead and they wanted to salvage and, and reuse. So we used a um, a, 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 a method to uh get the lead off so that they could repaint. Here, since it's more of a whole component removal, um, so we're not simply throwing it into a landfill. Uh, it, it can be processed. There's millions of tons of lead-painted metals that go through the, the recycle process every year.
Right.
The uh ceiling tiles that uh are, the suspended ceiling tiles can be disposed of as standard C and D waste. The metal grid would also be recycled. Uh, as far as the lights, uh, same basic process. If you intend to reuse them, we can uh hepa vacuum them and, and hand them off to the town for reuse. If you decide that you're gonna go to uh an LED light, then what we would do is uh take out um some of the internal components that um would be hazardous and scrap the metal. Dispose of the hazardous waste as hazardous waste.
Got it.
Um, above that, again, the, the tin would go out as a recycled material. Um, the lath and the wood that's holding the tin would uh be disposed of as, as common C and D waste. Before the waste leaves the site, we have something called the TCLP test done on it. And it is a representative sample of the waste that's within that container. And they measure the amount of, uh, in this case, it'd be lead. It's unlikely that it would meet a threshold where it's physically hazardous waste and then therefore it could just be disposed of as C and D waste.
Got it. That's the difference. Okay. Thank you. Um, start up here, Joe. Do you have questions? Scott?
Yeah, just one, Chris. Um, it, it, what, what's your company's experience with buildings like this that are on the National Historic Register?
Um, the church that we just completed was also on the historical register. Um, we do a lot of work with the state of New Hampshire. We have uh contracts with, with the state. Uh, as you can see, in our, in our lead license, um, our president, well, CEO uh helped to write the lead law here. Uh, our lead license is actually number one. And so we have quite a bit of experience.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, John, do you have questions?
So price includes labor materials and non-hazardous disposal, so it'd be extra for hazardous disposal. That's gonna be a charge over that?
But in the, in the unlikely event that that TCLP test came back um a- above the threshold, we would uh, the, the waste cost would be higher. And again, based on the debris that is planned to enter that container, I find it extremely unlikely that it's gonna classify as a hazardous waste. But I didn't want to set the expectation that if it, if it did, that it was an all-encompassing price.
Next, what do they do? By weight or volume or?
It's, it's based on volume. Um, so if you have, um, it's actually more of a, let's say there's fifty percent uh suspended ceiling tile in the can and twenty-five percent um plaster and twenty-five percent wood. You'd, you'd make the sample representative of that. So the sample would have fifty percent of the ceiling tile, twenty-five percent of the other two materials, so that it was characteristic of what's actually being disposed.
Mm-hmm. What's, what's the threshold for that?
Off the top of my head, I don't know the, the answer to that, but I could get that for you.
Like the only thing that's hazardous is the paint on the tin tiles.
Correct. Right. Yep. Um, the, the uh removal process, most of those uh tin ceilings that we've seen in the past are, are uh interlocked in, in some way, so they, they, they will come up, come apart. And that's our intent, is to try to keep it as intact as possible to minimize the, the risk. Um, not only to uh adversely impact the quantity of uh lead that goes out into the, into the field, but um for our worker safety as well. Everyone uh wears the Tyvek suits and the respirators and has their blood draws on a quarterly basis and everything you would expect from an outfit uh such as ourselves to, to do this type of work.
And those, at that point, those tiles would not, uh, the tin tiles would not go into the regular disposal dumpster and they
That's correct. We, we, yeah, we would package them uh and, and give them to a recycler.
And they would harvest the tin and
However, they, right. That, however, they stay compliant is uh, yep.
And that's not an extra charge for that.
No, there's not.
Any more questions, John? No, uh, Catherine, go ahead.
So your proposal mentions, uh, basically, you're, you're not expecting to run across asbestos. Although it says you do reserve the right if you do come across suspect material.
Right. So um, so we were provided with a, a survey uh from um the Lawson Group. And it appeared to me as though they had already done a sample of the uh plaster that, that was up there. And uh granted, it was a, a limited view or observation that I had above the ceiling tiles. But based on what I could see, it didn't look like there were many other components up there. Um, and I, I, during my first meeting here, um, I think I had given the recommendation for additional asbestos testing. But then when I went back and I actually looked at uh the Scott Lawson report, I think that that um covers everything that we would physically uh demolish. And there's something called a homogeneous area. So if the um, once the tin comes down and we're able to observe all of the lath that's up above, if it looks like it's of the same vintage and of the same time being put on, then uh we can use the data that they've already provided to us that shows that it's not an asbestos-containing material and proceed. Suspect material would be, oh, they, when they put the tin tiles up, they used uh black glue dobs that, you know, could or could not contain asbestos. It's just one of those unknown factors that, again, we try to uh have full disclosure. And so we don't want surprises, but at the same time, we need to make the town aware that if we pull a ceiling tile and lo and behold, it was put up with uh glue dobs, we would have to stop by law and have that, have that tested.
But Alpine, it appears, is looking for us to do more of an extensive asbestos test before they start.
Yeah, I, I don't know if they didn't see the Scott Lawson uh report uh or, or not.
If um we go with your company, how soon would you be able to start?
I believe we're a few weeks out right now. Um, one of the things that, that we would do, if given the award, this is something that we typically do, is uh have a, what they call a stakeholders meeting, where we'll come, we'll lay out our timeframe, talk to everyone that's impacted by uh, by the work. See if um, you know, there's an event that's taking place that makes sense to start after, you know. Does it make sense to start on July fifth as opposed to before? Because there's some big celebration that we don't know about. Um, but, you know, then we would flow through the three weeks. I would strongly encourage that uh before the demolition begins, since we know that uh it's going to displace people for a period of time, that the other contractors are lined up and can come in uh basically as soon as we're done.
Thank you for saying that.
Yeah.
One more question.
All right, we, um, okay. Let me just say this. I know we have some raised hands in the audience. If you just hold on for one second, go ahead.
So um regarding the electric and the wiring, um, so obviously they'd lock it out, you know, power or anything to it and probably, I'm assuming, remove the light fixtures. Do they have to remove all the wires out of your way or can you work around?
We can work around those.
Like cut that section and
Correct, correct.
Loop it off, so we don't have to strip all the wires out and reinstall them.
That is correct. Yep. Um, one of the, um, again, this would not be uh my expertise, but whoever does your uh, whether it's electrical or server, it looked like the server room was on that first floor. And I presume that the wires from there lead to the second floor unless there's a second server room up here. Um, and so uh that system would need to be de-energized while we're uh doing our work, so.
Fire alarm too.
Fire alarms, yep. Um, well, actually, one of the things that we discussed was having a conversation with the uh, the, the fire department. Obviously, we want to make them aware of the work that we're doing. Um, we would cover the smoke detectors during the day with basically a plastic boot um so that they don't get contaminated with dust. Um, and then at night, we remove those. Um, the work would be um sufficiently under what we call negative air pressure. So there'll be these glorified boxes downstairs with all kinds of filters in them. Uh, they'll be exhausting to the exterior of the building. It's hepa-rated air that's leaving, so it's not contaminated air. Um, that will be drawing air down into the, into the work zone. Um, and so therefore it will minimize the uh, the, the dust. Don't get me wrong, there's gonna be dust when that plaster comes down, but we'll do our best to, to manage it.
Okay, um, we're gonna take some online callers, one at a time, I hope. Uh, first one, I think, Tim, you gotta tell me, because I can't see who has the hand raised.
I think the hand uh may have gone down. Oh, yeah, he lowered his hand. So I don't think he has a question.
All set. Anybody else online?
Tim, I had a, I had a point of oh.
Okay, go ahead, Mark.
Hey, thanks, Pat. Hey, Chris, uh, I did see the report from Lawson. Um, and Lawson's got a um, did do, Jeannie had him do a niche up with the limited asbestos sampling, but it did not specifically call out for the um plaster above the tin ceiling. It called out plaster skim coat, plaster, wall top coat, wall plaster. Um, I felt it was in the best interests of the town to have Lawson sample now that be with the L and R uh or with the previous lead abatement contractor that was awarded the project as soon as they saw that ceiling. Um, it, it, it may be a homogeneous area, but the building's also been on fire at least two, if not three times. So who knows what the age of the, the plaster would be? Um, my suggestion would be that we're testing samples of the plaster on the western side of the beam and also on the eastern side of the beam. So just wanted to clean that up.
That's good. I, I could support that.
Thank you, Mark. So any other questions for Chris? Hearing none. Um, thank you for coming in, Chris. I really appreciate it.
Chris, thank you.
Okay, I, I do know that we're gonna talk about this for a little bit, but um both Jeannie and Tim have worked with the electrician. And do you have other information that you want to set forth first, correct?
Uh, so, Tim, feel free to chime in. We did have um Josh Carter come in, was it Tuesday night? Tuesday night. He did determine that you, as you heard, that you can shut the power off on the first floor and uh still have power running on the second floor. He also has the ability to provide the temporary power for the project. And he has also given us a quote for LED lighting, uh, if that's the way the board would like to go forward. Um, we have been calling contractors to get a quote for drop ceilings. We had one gentleman come in yesterday. He was supposed to have a quote today. He's act- I, I haven't seen it though yet. Um, he was recommended uh by uh Milestone, who had used them over at the PD. And um recommended by another person, a contractor that I know is, as a company that does drop ceilings. Gail has called multiple uh contractors to have them come in and give us a quote for the drop ceiling. One company was supposed to come in the other day, didn't show up. Uh, the other company got um, was, was all supposed to be here, but he got occupied with another job he's supposed to be in, I think at the end of this week to look at uh the drop ceiling. So the bottom line is, we have no quotes yet for the drop ceiling. We do have um quote from Mango, Tim, if you'd like to speak to that, since you
Yeah, well, just a few other things too. I mean, the, you know, devil's always in the details. The electrical, while, uh, while it can be separated, uh, you have to keep in mind that there won't be any power to the basement. So there won't be, if, if the hot water's coming off the boiler to this bathroom, whether that be the employee slash public bathroom as people are coming upstairs. Uh, so that would not be running off of, you know, the power down there. So anyway.
Did you say there won't be any hot water up here?
Well, if there is hot water in there now, uh, so I, I would check with the health officer, because I think we're required to have hot water in our bathrooms. But in any case, um, we don't have to.
It's not required?
It's not required in a public
So there's two thoughts on it. One is um CDC, um, are, it's more important to soak the rinse. And our soaps today are designed to dissolve in any water temperature. Um, Department of Health and Human Services for dishwashing purposes. Um, foster care and a few others, a daycare, they're handling whatever. Um, they want it to be two different temperatures, one for cooking and one for hand washing.
So I, I just wanted to make it known that, that um, you know, while it can be separated, it also includes the power off. And the first floor also includes the basement. So anything that would be active in the basement will be off during that time. Uh, the other thing is that there are uh three uh floor outlets on this second floor that do go out and underneath and are connected to the first floor. They said they would flag those and or disconnect them during the time. Uh, so that was that, the um, uh, let's see. Also, in terms of the uh, the smoke detectors uh downstairs. So in the selectman's office, town administrator's office and finance office, there are heat sensors in those offices. The rest of the sensors that are in the ceiling grid downstairs are smoke detectors. And um Mango Security came in. They looked at, at the options that we have and clearly bagging, bagging the smoke detectors is one thing that if there's nobody in the building, but if there are people working upstairs, the recommendation was to switch those out with heat detectors. Because if they went out to lunch and there's no one downstairs and, and the building inspector said, anytime you have construction in a building, you have a higher risk of, of fire. So that um if you have the heat sensors down there, if you do have people continuing to work up here, then uh the alarm, you know, would still be active. Um, let's see, the other thing I think you need to consider too is uh both companies indicated they would require um, and of course, correct me if I'm wrong, but require uh containers out on School Street uh so that the parking would be used up on School Street. So you're gonna have limited parking uh as it is. And then um, and then I think lastly, just uh, as you can imagine, there's been a lot of discussion uh internally amongst the employees about, you know, what's going on, what are the decisions gonna be made? And, and there's some concern uh people have that you know, what's going on, what are the decisions going to be made? And, and there's some concern people have that have expressed about working in the building at the same time there's construction going on downstairs. And of course, the, the handicap issues. As for me, both companies have indicated, you know, everything needs to be out when they're working down there. So that means all the, all the server equipment, every, everything like that. So the fiber would have to be routed up to the second floor here. And, and tag. It's a very thin thing, but still that would have to come up. And then all the equipment. We think based on talking to our electrician that there's sufficient power, but we don't necessarily have sufficient outlets. So we'd have to have some power strips. Obviously, all the cabling that connects all the devices downstairs now is in the walls and ceilings. So we'd have to buy, you know, cabling, which is cheap. But it's going to have to be strewn around, you know, as best we can without creating trip hazards and other things. And then, of course, lastly, you have the issues that we faced that was discussed when the PD was rolled out, which was the security of the town clerk tax collectors area and how that would be managed with the public. So I just want to bring a few of those things up as you think about, you know, the options you have before you. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Jeannie, you all, you all set? Okay, so now we have some decisions to make. I think our first decision is the entire base, the entire first floor or the half. John?
I think we have to figure where we're going to put people to you know, how we're going to do that.
Before we decide whether or not with, what kind of demolition we're going to do?
And do we have a place to put them or are we going to have to go and try and sell for half or, or the whole thing?
Okay.
I, I don't know. I haven't heard anything as to where we can place people.
All right, we'll talk about where we're going to place people first and then we'll talk about the demolition. But where do we start?
Put people on the second floor.
Any other thoughts?
I, I guess.
I, I was just going to note, I put it on my notes, but I didn't mention it. But it's not too dissimilar to when we worked through the pandemic. People weren't allowed in the building at one point in time. So people went downstairs to meet them at the cars. A number of people worked from home, you know, they were alternating schedules, that sort of thing. So it was not that long ago, we sort of managed that.
We can open up Heather's office door. Make sure that any files she has in there are secure. So if someone has to go downstairs to help one of our public, there's an office they can sit in. I think our biggest question is, as Tim said, if we, when we bring the town clerk tax collector up, up here, how do we secure her section?
It wouldn't be just the town clerk tax collector. It would also be the administrative assistant. So there's two entities that are downstairs right now. And we already said that Jeannie and Tim could work from home. So eliminating the, the two of them, but we also said that we also have a place, we need a place for the administrative assistant, town clerk, tax collector and the deputy.
Right. Administrative assistant, though, we don't have to secure, you know, her area.
Correct.
But the town clerk tax collector, I think that's a bigger issue. How do we secure that?
Right.
With fireproof locking file cabinets?
Can those cabinets that she has downstairs be moved up here?
I would be concerned about weight.
The only ones that she needs to work with.
They don't need the safes.
And I don't, I don't know what they are.
Not the safes. I'm not talking about the safes.
The filing cabinet?
The, the files that, that the file cabinets that Kim needs to work with every day. But then we just need a lockable place for the DMV plates decals, things which we could figure out a lock box, something to put it in. A room. Does your, your place up there doesn't lock, does it? Okay.
No, but if we had a fireproof safe, they're pretty heavy. Nobody's, I mean, file cabinet. I don't think anybody's going to pick it up and carry it out.
I don't think anybody's going to mess with it.
And it locks. Those things could be put in there. The rest of what she has would be maybe another file cabinet because she'd have to temporarily store new generated files up here. She wouldn't have access to file meeting minutes, first desk, et cetera, downstairs that have to be kept up here. So maybe that's the answer. And I've got a feeling we're going to have to talk to the town clerk to find out if that would accommodate her. I mean, after all, right now, that office, right at this moment, is not secure. I mean, in my tenure, I've, I've watched people, oh, let me get that light, jump over the counter, shut the light off and jump back out.
Right.
Oh, I need a pen, jump over the counter, come back out. So.
There are certain things that are secure in that office, right?
But I think we need to have that conversation with the town clerk tax collector.
What's the rating on that elevator? 2,000 pounds, yes?
600 isn't it?
How much?
It's like 700.
We're not talking about moving a safe up here, though?
No.
Okay. Oh.
I think you could send a file cabin up the elevator.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can't weigh more than 700 pounds?
No.
Right?
That's how we've moved them in the past.
Up, up the elevator, correct?
All right. So that's easy. That's done.
But we would need something to secure her walkables. And then IT would have to hook them up here. So then you would have to create a space for them, use this table, whatever. I mean, it would be.
Do you use, do you use the front part of that office where you have a window where people could walk up to that window?
Put people in that.
Yeah, she works in there. Janice works. Janice and Chuck both work there. I don't know.
Desperate times and desperate measures.
But she can't work from home because she does the filing in here and, and the work that comes in, puts it in the computer. John?
Perhaps she could move in, we could have a cubicle area set up for her stuff that's not needed to be in a secure area and have them just a little section in there. Show game here.
Yeah. Joe?
I see the sewer department is sitting in the back, Johanna. And as one of the major stakeholders in being upstairs now, what does that kind of a move do to you?
I think that we all need to work together. I think that this is an emergency situation and we all have to make concessions. I think that we learned a lot through the pandemic. I think that we made things work and we can do it again. I think there are those of us that are able to work from home and I think that's great. And the, those that aren't, I have concerns with people moving up on the second floor. Weight wise, you're talking about bringing up more filing cabinets. These are all placed along a beam. Where is it? Do we know the structural integrity will hold it? That's a concern. I know that during the pandemic, a lot of times the town clerk tax collector went out on the sidewalk and helped people outside the building. I worry that we have a lot of elderly that come up and coming up the stairs. I've seen a lot of very near heart attacks and I worry about people coming up and down the stairs. And I think it's a lot to ask for town clerk tax collector or their deputy to run up and down the stairs 50 times a day. That's going, that's going to be a lot. This area, not secure. There's a little lock on it and you can twist it with a paper clip. So not secure that door. I, I worry that there are serious health concerns in this building right now. And I can tell you, I walked downstairs in the hallway this week. There is an open ceiling tile over the deputy's desk. Two ceiling fans either side going. That, that's concerning. That's concerning to me. You know, it, was it an oversight? Of course it was. Nobody wants there to be problems in here, but there are problems. And I'm here eight hours a day and I see it and I'm afraid for my health. I am not worried about the disruption of fixing it. I'm worried about my health and it not being fixed. We have an opportunity to take care of the entire bottom floor. Why would we not do it? This is our health. These are your employees. It's been said on camera numerous times that there are health issues involved. And sitting on the problem and not jumping on it is scaring me to death. And I have to come here every day and I come because I have to. It's my job. It's everybody's job here. Us employees are scared for our health. We'll do whatever we need to do and I commend Tim and Jeannie trying to come up with positive solutions. I commend Kevin trying to come up with positive solutions. I don't have that solution, but I'm willing to do whatever it takes and thank you for the opportunity.
Appreciate it. So as a side note, the town clerk tax collector deputy has the ability to reach out to people that call and say, I can meet you, especially elderly. I can meet you at your home. I can meet you there. They have that capability to do that. That so the concern of having them climb up the stairs can be deterred a little bit by that.
Well, it also behooves us to advertise this project in advance as much as possible. Just public to let them know the inconveniences, what's going on. There's going to be people that want to avoid Town Hall.
But the
We need to make sure that it's out there and they know.
Right.
I think my biggest concern with the, with everybody that works up here, especially when we move the town clerk, task collector up here, because in my years I've seen some very angry customers. Is to make sure that whatever we do for them, there is some sort of barrier, whether they're on the other side of this table. We buy some dividers, whatever, but that's a concern. But again, I think this is a conversation we need to have with the town clerk.
So that they're not locked in into, people come into a cubicle. There's no way for them to get out of that cubicle. They're trapped in there. Right. But if you're in a, if they walk into a cubicle where they are, if they're behind a desk, they can easily get out of there.
Exit, yeah.
Yeah, but not a cubicle.
So it's kind of a long shot, but could we maybe see if Northfield would assist? And they could set some, do registrations through there?
You're going to have another town collector?
Do her work for her?
Taxes?
No, they've
How does North
Technically, they
Tax money or any kind of money for it?
Well, I'm thinking of, you know, sharing a little bit of space for a couple of weeks, just, you know.
That's me, BP.
You don't know. You know, they could set up one of our computers there so that can, people can come in, share the office and just, you know, it's a shot in the dark. I think if they had that issue, we'd offer them, you know, to see if we could help them out.
The other issue is, is where are we going to have meetings? I mean, you have conservation park. Sewer commissions are all set. I mean, those
Would have to be at the EOC?
Those could meet wherever, but
Or the senior center?
The senior center.
I mean, the EOC, the senior center, other than
Depending.
Depending on the evening, there, it's open.
And again, so advanced notice so that the the planning can
Right.
Get planned. Parks budget, well, it's not budget season, is it? With fire district now, et cetera, et cetera, army.
Fire district can easily go over to Northfield. That's not an issue.
But I mean, it's just
EOC would be available.
People know.
Right. Depending on the evenings, I think that we could meet at, it's only gonna, if it's eight weeks, it's only going to be three or four meetings that we would be doing up there. That's would be no brainer. But then we would planning, zoning would be important and they could go up to the EOC.
So we've got to let the chief know.
Same with, well, sewer commissions on Tuesdays. I mean, the senior center would be open on Tuesday evenings. That would be available. Oh, or you could go in the corner there. That's perfect. The other, I think that that we could work with the committees depending, you know, where, when.
As long as we give them enough notice to make those plans.
Communication is going to be the key. I think you're absolutely right. So administrative assistant up here with some type of I think one of the issues is going to be confidentiality, you know, talking, you know, because it's an open space. So you have, whether it be the administrative assistant, talking with an elderly person going, you know, talking about elderly exemptions. They could go upstairs into your room or if it's the town clerk tax collector online with, I don't know, secretary of state or something, whatever, avatar, whatever. I mean, it's, it is going to be an issue. This is just going to have to work through it. That's the way it is. But I think we could come up with something, Kev, on dividing space for town clerk tax collector and administrative assistant.
Yes, we could. We can build some temporary petitions. I know that sound machines are used at other offices for privacy. I wanted to also mention that I had spoke with the building inspector and he is on board with coming to the DPW for the duration of the project. So that will alleviate some pressure up here with him. And I do have another space available if maybe Johanna wanted to come down and work out of DPW for the duration of the project as well. My crew and I will just adjust our daily routines into the shop area in those offices which are lockable, can be utilized.
So if Chuck is going down to the DPW, that frees up a desk for Gail.
Behind the door.
Right.
So then we could utilize this space here or here, doesn't matter. Not move the table because it's all wired in, whatever, and just have the town clerk tax collector here. And then, go ahead, Joe.
What kind of timeframe can you put this together in? That's a, that's a threefer. Anybody can jump in on that one.
Building, building petitions, what's the scope of work?
You have to build a couple of petitions. A door would be nice. I'm sure that Jeannie and, and Tim can help you with where they're going to go specifically.
A few days is realistic.
John?
You talked about building petitions. White Farm has so many petitions that they're just about throwing them out. So, you know, you could go down there and boom, pop them up.
Oh, you mean the office? The temporary office?
Yeah, yeah, those things. So I, I think maybe at this point, if, you know, if everybody feels comfortable that we can make it happen, then we can go on to the decision of the scope of the work and do that. I, I feel confident that you guys have
So leave it in the hands of So leave it in the hands of Jeannie, Tim and Kevin to make, make it happen upstairs?
Well, with the cooperation of the town clerk tax collector.
Yeah, you've got to consult those who are going to
She's got to, yeah. She's got to be consulted.
I would ask Gail as well.
I don't even know if you could get a, a construction site trailer and take a parking space up front and put something there.
Oh, interesting.
So, so I guess what we're saying here is as long as you consult with Kim and figure out what she need, absolute needs to come up here. out what she need, absolute needs to come up here. Figure that out. Okay. All right.
I would also suggest that during this project, we take these two spaces across the street over here for town hall use.
Okay.
Town hall parking.
Town hall parking only.
Sort of temporary signage.
Yep. Temporary.
Or just.
I have signs at the DPW that we could put up there temporarily.
We just have to ask the chief to make sure that they're policed.
Okay.
That'll be due.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Okay, next. All right. We're all, all set with, you're okay with that, making it happen to have town clerk tax collector and administrative assistant up here, making it work?
I will talk, I will talk to them.
Okay.
We'll need to get Josh Carter on board to get that electrical straightened out.
Did he give us a timeframe on that, once he starts, what it would take?
For disconnecting everything? Well.
And making the, making, not long, the loop and up here and in making it, splitting it?
It's, it's not going to take that long.
No.
It's, it's not going to take long. He has to flag above the finance offices where the, the power comes under the ceiling. So, but it's in a, it's encased in something. So he's got to flag that. He's got to disconnect the floor outlets, a few other minor things, but otherwise it's not that much.
Okay.
Has he also given us a price to meeten up our wiring down there?
No.
No.
I thought the board had decided against that.
Well, when we, when we discussed that with them, really not knowing what condition it's going to be, once all the work is done, we just left it as time materials that, that we have a price for, you know, what a day, a day is for two employees. And we thought it would probably be somewhere around there to cinch up the wire. So maybe, you know, $1,100 per day, worst case.
Expecting to do that work.
Yeah, but he, he said without knowing, you know, without knowing what it's going to be like, there's really no way to price it.
Phone is on board, ready to.
And, and in terms of time materials, I mean, we can, we can set a limit that we want to spend on it and just do what makes sense there. And there are some of the wiring already, some of the IT wiring for data and phone are, are color coded as well as for the surveillance stuff. So some of that is easier to piece off and, and know what's active and what is old. So, but otherwise it'd be time materials.
He did say he could do that. It was depending on the board's decision.
Expensive.
It would be expensive, about $1,100 a day to do it. Okay. John, go ahead.
So I think that it's, will only be proper to replace the light fixtures at this time with the LED. You're taking them out.
Second.
And, you know, then the other stuff can be thrown away, whatever has to be done with it. And.
What was the quote on that?
And the other thing would be to replace the ceiling tiles, correct?
Yes.
I mean, you could even get something a little more.
It was nine, it was about $9,000.
$9,300.
$9,300.
What's at the?
LED.
Nice.
And we have 35 light fixtures right now, but we would need fewer than 35 because the.
Because of the LED.
The LED. So I think he quoted 30 for that.
So your question for the.
Ceiling.
The ceiling tiles are going to be replaced. They're taking the ceilings down, ceiling tiles down, and the new ones will be put up. So, yeah. Scott, you had a question?
No, I just think that we, I think we may be at the point in the conversation where we've got to decide, are we going to do half or whole?
Mm-hmm. I agree with getting to that.
Yeah, which is where we, you know, where we had started with this.
Are we all set with the LEDs first before we move on so that we don't have to circle back with it?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
John's, yes, it's consensus that we go with LEDs. All right. Okay. Decision, full or half? John?
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we go with the EnviroVantage option two, all of first floor.
Jason in second.
All right. So a motion's been made and seconded. For clarification purposes, are we, when you say EnviroVantage, are you choosing which one gets the bid on this?
It's the, yeah.
Between the two of them. Okay, got it. I just want clarification. Joe, you had a good.
For Tim, there's a lot of money all of a sudden going out, drop ceilings and electricians and tiles and lead and asbestos. Where does that money come from? Tell me about the money.
I'd be happy to. In my presentation to you at your last meeting, I discussed.
Refresh my memory.
Oh, no, absolutely. So just to take you through the, the available funds. Currently, there's, there are some projects that are in process but haven't been completed under ARPA fund. That's $44,500 that has not been spent yet on the crosswalk, which could be diverted. There's $6,500, another partially approved project for the survey in front of River Front Place for the sidewalk. There's $44,000 remaining in town hall maintenance and repairs. There's the $20,000 in the new capital reserve fund for infrastructure. And then we have $118,000 available in ARPA funds that were not previously approved, but were, had been discussed as earmarked for three different projects. So in total, including $67,000 of budget transfers of salary, wages, medical, retirement, disability, all the benefits that have not been spent yet because we have not hired for those positions, is another $67,000. So that's a total of $300,000 available. Would we, would, you know, those are the areas, some you may not want to, you know, stop the process on some of those projects, but there's, seems to be more than sufficient money to handle the project.
Jeannie, go ahead.
Just a quick question. That was, the motion was for option two of EnviroVantage?
Yes.
Correct.
If anybody wants to know, that's all of the first floor. You'd probably want to know that.
All right, that's a total of $60,000. All right. So we have a motion and a second for EnviroVantage to do the entire first floor. Any more discussion?
Just how soon does that have to start?
Let's do the motion first and then we can, oh, is this pertinent to the, do your decision on the motion?
Yeah.
Okay. The availability of you starting, Chris.
Several weeks, no doubt. He, the, the guy, how long, will it take you, three weeks?
When you're ready, we're ready.
Okay. There you go. All right, a motion's been made and seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion for Enviro, option two for EnviroVantage?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Motion passes. Okay, so let's talk logistics of removing the downstairs. Are we having a professional do that to remove the furniture from downstairs? We're going to get somebody to do that. We're not depending on our guys to do it. Thank you. I don't think that's wise to do that.
What are we doing with it?
My box.
My box, storage.
I know what that is.
Mm-hmm. I know you do.
Running across the street from your house.
Okay. What else? There's LED, the lighting. We don't know the suspended ceiling back again yet, but we kind of know what, what we want back again for contractors. By the time we meet in two weeks, we'll probably have more information on that.
And as they come in, I can send them out.
Okay. And then you're, you're going to speak with you and Tim and Kevin with Kim and town clerk tax collector. Make sure that that happens and also administrative assistant, make sure that happens.
Yep.
Now, the other question that I have is the, for the couple of days that, I'm going to put this out to Chris, we had suggested closing that door off so that we could have ingress and egress up here. Can you do that first so that we can get our employees upstairs? How many days should we count on that?
I would expect two, but what I'll do when I leave tonight is I'll take some additional photos. I'll create a, a project timeline.
Okay.
We'll have a stakeholders meeting and we'll share it with everyone and make sure that it makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
Gotcha.
With that happening, board, if it takes two days, with not being able to get up here, do you want to close the town hall completely and keep our employees safe?
Yeah.
And the question then becomes, do you pay them or not?
Paid. Oh, paid.
Paid.
Yes.
So when that happens, we will close town hall completely, but we don't know the date yet, so we can't really say.
I missed that, when you call, what do you?
When, the first thing Chris is going to do is be able to secure up above, coming in the hallway where Heather's office is, so that we can seal off, Kevin can seal off going up the stairs so that people can come through the double doors. But that is attached up where he's going to be working, and that will be about two days for him to get that completed. Before we can safely walk up there.
Gotcha.
So while that happens, town hall and staff here will, town hall will be closed, we'll have to put the word out.
Okay.
Would everybody agree with that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So when we get a timeframe, it would be important to let us know, because we need to get the, especially town clerk tax collector, because it's tax season. So we'll need to get that. The other thing is mail, can we, tax bills are coming in?
Gail said that at least for the mail, she would go to the post office every morning, pick it up, so they don't have to worry about being delivered here.
Okay. I wouldn't want Tim to come in a panic if people were paying tax bills and it was lost somewhere in the vestibule.
They're due July 3rd. I'm not worried.
Well, that's not, that's only four weeks away. It's going to be eight weeks, Tim, this whole project.
There were a few other items. You started listing some, some of the costs. Did you want a complete list or?
Would, yeah. Whatever you have, we guess.
Well, based on what we had determined last time, because the cost to move, whether it's out of the first floor or to another building are about the same. So including the quote we got on the, the smoke to heat sensors, especially if people are going to work up here, the, the total for the temporary electrical connection, which we did not discuss yet, which we'll need a spec from Chris for our electrician, also the IT move of all the equipment up here and the, you know, hopefully, you know, all the cabling for that, the storage moving, and then the mango stuff, it's a total of about $12,500 for all that. Shouldn't be any more than that. And the moving might be, might, you know, the moving could be less than what we were anticipating because that was what we paid for the move from the old PD. And it's, we're moving roughly 3,200 square feet of furniture, if you will, versus 5,000 feet before.
Except you're going to have to pay to move it back too at some point.
Well, so that's why, you know, hopefully it won't be any, any more than that. Yeah.
That's a good point. Moving it back and putting it back. Okay. Any more questions about this? Go ahead.
Isn't it really, well, one's a question, one's for our, our new best buddy, Chris. I want our employees that we bring up here, and this is the ones that already work up here, to feel safe during the project. Is there any information you could provide us that we can pass on to them that would reassure them that they're not breathing in lead dust during the project, that they are perfectly safe up here?
Let me see what I can put together for you. I'm happy to hold a meeting with them as well to talk through their concerns.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Yep. And then my other comment is, is that I believe we should put a hold on any unnecessary spending for now. Any projects, any unnecessary purchases, whatever they may be.
Except old home day candy.
You really want to get into that one? You know how I feel about old home day candy.
Just saying. Just saying. And I'm going to fight you on that one.
Project now.
But I think we, we should.
I agree with you. Yep.
By and large, yes.
Yes.
If something comes up, we can discuss that.
That's right. If somebody feels it's absolutely necessary, they can bring it to the board of selectmen.
At this point, yes, I agree. All right, anybody else?
If, if you'd like, I can give you a listing by department of those items that won't be spent because time has elapsed or, you know, can identify a listing of that. I can tell you one, one thing right now, when we did the power down the other night, the server that we had problems with about a month or so ago resurfaced and, and it, we're, we're not running on a full second server. So that server is going to have to be replaced probably this summer. So that's something that we're not going to be able to avoid doing. I mean, we can Band-Aid it for a while, but right now it's running on a decreased performance because of some, some hardware issues with it.
We can probably get through the project first and then talk about that.
Well, unfortunately with, with that equipment, you know, whether it's going to be strewn across the stage in front here, you know, it's going to get moved. There's always the potential, anytime anything gets moved, you know, plugged in, unplugged, what kind of, what kind of reliability the service is, if it gets, you know, if it's too much, you know, we're going, we have to identify the outlets. We talked with the electrician about finding a dedicated circuit up here that would protect it from the rest of the equipment or coffee maker or other things, so.
Tim, do you have a, like a rolling rack for the servers and that at this time?
No.
You think that would be appropriate, that it could go into a rolling rack?
Well.
You know, server rack that could be put on the, you know, elevator, come up, and then after they're done downstairs, it could be put back in.
So I, I say no, but I, I have a, I have a spare rack at the PD that could probably be modified. In fact, I think it has rollers in the front of it, but not in the back. So it's partially, and it is a four-post, but, but everything's going to have to, you know, everything's going to have to come out and go into the other, you know, basically.
This would be the time, if you're taking everything out to mount it into a rack, that makes it portable, so you can make it portable.
But the, the patch panel and cabling is all still going to be in the old rack and, you know.
Joe, go ahead.
What do it cost to replace that server?
We're probably looking at about $6,000 to $8,000.
That's what we did last year. Was it last year we got the new server?
No, no, no.
The year before that.
Another degree, whatever.
It was in 20.
2020, right.
Yeah. At the PD.
Yep. I remember that. All right. Go ahead.
Do we have that budgeted? That new server?
No.
Okay.
Someone.
I have one question.
Go ahead.
Tim, could you email the board of selectmen your list of piggy bank money?
Love the term. What you just read us all. Okay.
Do we have a hard copy? Please.
Is there anything else that we're missing? Chief, we, we would like to, when this project begins, Kevin's going to have two signs, the two parallel parking out front here, we want to put town hall only because we're going to have dumpsters out front here at town hall parking. So if you can just make sure that that's enforced with the offices. So if you can just make sure that that's enforced with the offices. Oh, it's going to be about eight weeks for the project, for the entire project.
That's during working hours.
It's about, it's about two and a half weeks to three weeks for the project to be completed. And then we have reconstruction of the project, which would take three or four weeks. But it's only Monday through Friday. What's that?
Dumpster's will not be removed.
Right, right. We're just saying the, the parking out on the main road and dedicate that to town hall.
The other contractors will end up using.
So I had a question.
Go ahead, John.
So it will be the same setup for the parking that spaces that are out there now? So we could just pretty much put us, move the sign over?
Yeah, good.
Same rules.
You could, unless you have signs at the.
I might have exact batches to be.
Okay. Okay, go ahead. Is there anything else that we're missing for this project? Any questions for Jeannie, Tim, anybody? Now's the time because it's only, it's two weeks before we meet again, so.
And we start in the morning, right?
So we're leaving everything to Jeannie, Tim, I'll help when I can, and Kevin to kind of, and Chief to kind of put this all together.
So what we'll do is Tim and I and Kevin, I guess, will meet with Chris to go over the timeline and the, you know, when things are going to happen and when he can meet with the employees to address their concerns and what needs to happen in terms of getting, getting the furniture out. That, that's probably going to take you, give you a little bit of time to get ready because we'll have to get all the furniture out and stored. So, yeah.
So that's, go ahead.
So while this is all being done, they're going to be moving the cabinets and all that out and demoing. It's, and taking ceiling grid down, it might be low inevitable that the walls are going to get banged up a little bit. I mean, I know you're cautious in that. Is this the time that we should paint the walls? You'd protect the carpet, right? Yeah. You know, put the, while there's no furniture in there and there's.
A painter. Anybody else while we're at it? Just repaint, touch it up? Do the offices.
It's always good to repaint over our lead paint.
Oh, not that, the paint on the walls.
So the offices themselves could be nicked and the, you know, the, the, the framework and things like that. So it's always good to, while we're at it, to get the offices repainted.
I think we'd make it a little bit easier for Chris to do it too, that. Don't go nuts on them, but.
So the consensus is, Jeannie, that yes, try to get quotes on a painter.
And colors.
We'll kind of keep it into the neutral colors.
Same kind of colors we have now, more or less.
I'm standing out of it.
But we, anything but pink.
No red.
Yeah.
Thank you, color.
So you have a little bit of things there. Okay. Anything else? We're all set on that? Chris, do you have any questions for us?
No, but thank you.
Okay. All right, so.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris. Appreciate it.
We'll be seeing you.
A lot of you, I hope.
I presume he's going to have a contract for us.
Yeah, he has a proposal in front of you and he'll.
Does that, that's.
That's not a contract. That's a proposal.
He'll pay us so much when and if you don't, we'll do this. He just needs to know that it'll be two weeks before we sign him.
Right.
Or we could.
All right, Kev, you have any questions on the reconstruction or anything? Nothing, Chief? Anything like that? We're moving Town Click Tax Collector and Administrative Assistance. Go ahead.
Just one thing, as I was walking down, I said I was going to take photos. There is a hard ceiling at the bottom of the stairs leading directly out that door.
The double door?
Out that double door, so we scale off the doorway and stay up the entire time.
Oh, oh, great. That's great news. Okay.
Nice.
That's.
See, it's not our new best friend.
Who are you? Good thing. So contract for, so we meet every two weeks, so we'd like to.
Yeah, that's fine. We'll have, so typically what, what we do is we do daily updates internally and we can provide Jeannie or whomever with a weekly progress report. Could even have someone on Zoom for your two-week meetings as well.
A contract for us to sign.
Contract to enter into.
Agreement.
Agreement, because this is just a pamphlet telling you what you're going to do.
Right, propose.
Proposal.
Right, that's the proposal. Does the town have something that they prefer to use? Or I mean, I could have our contract department send it up. It'll be simple.
And then we can.
Yeah.
No problem.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
When, that's something that we can, do we need to wait for two weeks to sign or can we have, put it in sign now?
Well, we're going to read it and.
Yeah, well, you could read it.
Agree to it and sign it.
Well, if you signed it, you'd agree to it.
Except sign now, you could have three people agree and no discussion.
That's true.
So we're going to put it off for two weeks?
No.
Well, we can put the contract off for two weeks. Chris doesn't seem to be concerned about the contract. We made a motion to hire him.
Yeah, okay.
Well, just to, as a point, it may take two weeks to get everything moved out of here and stored.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And the electric guy, three weeks. I'm solving it in three weeks.
And the IT guy.
What are you doing weekends?
Okay, so we pretty much ironed it all out. It's going to take a couple of weeks to get the furniture out. What are they going to do in the interim by the time you get the furniture out? Is everything going to be set up here first and then they just come up here once you get downstairs?
Yeah, that would be the plan. Tim and I will sit down and talk about it tomorrow.
Got it. All right. I have complete faith.
We still might have to close town hall for a day or two while we make the transition.
If we have to, we're agreeable to that.
Yeah.
All right. All right. The time being 6:25. I make, I make a motion to move into non-public session per RSA 91A:32A, the dismissal, dismissal promotion or compensation of any public employee of the disappointing of such employee or the investigation of any charges against him or her unless the employee affected. One has the right to a public meeting and two, request that the meeting be open, in which case the request shall be granted.
Jessman, second.
Roll call vote.
Jessman, yes.
Rogals, yes.
Scanlon, yes.
Boston, yes.
Constantino, yes. Yes, you do it.
This conference will now be recorded. I'd like to make a motion to Seale, this is June 1st, 2023, because disclosure would adversely affect the reputation of a person other than the member of the board permit. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are now on to Selectmen's Report.
Don't forget your mic, Select, Chairman Constantino.
Chairman Constantino.
Don't forget your mic.
Thank you.
Okay, first up, John.
Not a lot to report. I, I'm personally, I just, I'd been doing the mowing and I cleaned up the gardens and proved the wrong rose bushes and did some trimming on the welcome Tilton sign. The police department put the speed sign up there and it's amazing. Right there, it slowed that traffic down that was going into the center. It's, you know, people would race off the lights and then they'd see that, they slowed down. So that's been a great help and hopefully saved some injuries or anything. That's about it.
Thank you. Scott?
I, I don't have anything this week.
Joe?
On Wednesday, yesterday, we did, Tuesday? Tuesday, we did the torch run. They had a, it went from the high school to Franklin High School, our section of it. And then the Belmont people, at Northfield people and several different departments all came to our police department over there and the police union, I think, provided the burgers and dogs and, you know, those kinds of things. And I cooked them and a good time was had by all. I know it was awkward for most people during, it was like a 12 to one thing or whatever, 11:30 to one. But Jeannie brought the food and Jeannie came and helped at the cleanup job. And it went well. And that's, I still haven't heard from Titus, but we have four weeks for the concerts and the last Saturday in June is Old Home Day. And that's me.
And the Monday before that is Citizen of the Year, correct?
That is correct. There will be a Citizen of the Year ceremony held at the pines on the Monday preceding.
Hold on there.
Hold on.
Thank you, Joe. Catherine?
Not a lot. I guess I should have brought this up with Kevin. I'm still looking for the 10-year plan or five-year plan or however many years it is for roads, bridges and sidewalks. I didn't see it in the dashboard.
His, his, I just, when I read his report, he said it, it was, it's been posted on the website. So his DPW report that came today.
Okay, I haven't read that yet. Thank you. I'll look. I did speak with Kevin about the estimate for paving, I mean, the parking lot. He's going to provide at least two estimates, possibly three with different scenarios. And then I will, and I've been talking with Mr. Penullo, so once I get that, I'll.
Great.
Have him and then I probably, I think probably the next step would ask Mr. Penullo to come to a Board of Selectmen's meeting. Don't you think?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. When I get those proposals from Kevin, I will email them to the board and to Jeannie.
Great.
Great. Thank you.
I'm going to bring a box of those pastries from the north end. I'll buy, I'll buy.
Can always, yeah.
Oh, he's got all sorts of different ones.
Mike's pastry. Oh, yeah, that's a great place.
Yes.
Okay, that it, Catherine?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of things. Memorial Day, it was simple, quaint, but there was quite a lot of people out watching the parade. I was happy to see that. It was great. It was wonderful ceremonies stopping down from the high school on. It was just the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts and Winnetka Music and the veterans. And then of course the honor garden in the beginning, but it was a very simple ceremony, but it was very well received. There is, on July 15th, we got this flyer from the family of Bernie Chapman. Please join Bernie's family in a day of remembrance, celebration and storytelling. Bernie, Bernie truly loved this community and the people in it. He touched so many lives. We invite all of you to come and share the love that he so generously spread. July 15th, 11 to 4, it's barbecue. It's, food and drinks are provided. Please bring any stories and pitches you have and be ready to celebrate. All are welcome. Spread the word. It's at 45 Sanborn Road in the field, Ball Field behind Tanger Outlets. I have a few thank yous. First off, I want to thank Catherine, her daughter and Miranda. Particularly Catherine because it's got to be going on at least 20, 25 years, doing the trough and out by the monument here, finished just in time for the presentation. And thank you, Kevin, for picking up the trash that people, that Tilton School left out after helping seniors, helping seniors day. Also, I have a note to ask Jeannie to check on the agreement that we have with the Autism Center using the Senior Center. I don't know if that expires or not, but I just thought of MOUs and agreements and I thought of that one. Just check the expiration of it. That would be great. Other than, other than that, that's it for me. We can go into the minutes of 4:20 first. Thank you. Have a nice, clean copy of the draft. And in red, other changes. I just have one question about the, in red on page three of five. And the last sentence in red, it was confirmed that now Jeannie is the contact. Unless it's an emergency, then the board could call the department head directly. I, I think we established that if it was an emergency, particularly with the police department, the police would call the chair.
Where are you at?
On page three of five.
But what paragraph?
Am I on the right? Yeah. The first paragraph, it's in red. See the last sentence in red?
Okay.
I think we established that and then. That's the only one I have. Anybody else?
The last sentence of that paragraph about the cemetery, it's, it leaves the public hanging. I mean, the rest of the story is, is that the board asked me to contact the property owner and get that moving.
Yeah.
And I think that's important to put in there because there's a lot of people that are concerned about that.
Okay. So these go back to be corrected? Okay, minutes of May 4th. Anybody have any questions about this? I don't have any concerns. Make a motion, we accept the minutes as written. Oh, are you, Catherine, you're not finished?
I'm finished.
Oh, you sure?
Yes.
Okay.
Rogal's second.
A motion has been made and seconded to accept the minutes of May 4th, 2023, as written. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, May 10th.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes of May 10th.
Second half of discussion. I, I just have one question. I don't know if anybody else says this. Do you have a blue line where it says Finance IT Director? Is that?
A printer.
It's that, it's a printer? So that is staying in Finance IT Director? Okay, okay, I'm fine with that.
That's what it seems like.
Yeah.
I get one of the printers.
Motion been made and seconded to accept the minutes of May 10th, 2023 as written? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have all abstained.
As will I.
Okay, so three ayes and two abstentions. Okay, uh, minutes of May 18th, 2023?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes of May 18th, 2023.
Ruggles second.
A motion has been made and seconded. Anyone have any discussion on this?
So this is our last meeting?
Yes.
Yes, uh.
Yes, it was the last.
Yep, last meeting, yep.
So what's in red? Is that amendments?
No, this is the draft minutes.
Yeah.
From May 18th.
What, we were reviewing May 4th's minutes and she just put those in red because this, because May 4th hasn't been accepted.
Those were the ones.
And they were corrected. They were corrections.
So it wasn't amended to these minutes?
That's correct.
It was just.
That's right.
It was highlighting what was gonna be amended.
It was highlighting what we went in May 4th.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Everybody have time? Or it's still reading?
On the bottom of page two, the conversation I had with Ken Norton about, patrolling the trail. What I suggested was that the Trail Association do those patrols. That it shouldn't cost the town of Tilton. Right? And, um.
Okay.
They could communicate with the PD. I don't think that's clear. Suggested a preventative presence, a regular patrol coordinated with local PD, with the local PDs, plural, and those communities. I'm not sure what that means. I don't believe that's what I said.
Well, that they would, uh, report any issues that they found. They should have a regular presence on the trail.
Who should?
The Trail Association.
That's not what it says. Not specific.
But the, but the sentence before that says there is a strong presence of folks on the trail from the Trail Association and others that know them. And then you suggested a preventative presence, a regular patrol coordinated with the local PDs and those communities. In those communities. I, I understand what you're saying because I agree with you. You did have that conversation.
And I don't know why PD is plural.
Right, well, because it's Northfield and, and because.
But I didn't talk about Northfield. I only talked about the Tilton Trail.
Right.
And that they have, that they, it was specific that they, the association actually have regular patrols. And then if needed, report back to the PD. In other words, you know, there's a homeless encampment. They report to our PD and then they take care of it.
Right.
But the patrol, regular patrols are done by them. And that's not what it says. That's not what's clear.
Okay.
Did they patrol the trail and any of the other communities?
They have.
Do they have any enforcement?
The trail does, and then they contact the police.
Well, that's what it says right here. There are members and or friends on the trails who report any issues or concerns that need to be dealt with either by police or landowners. There's a strong presence of folks on the trail from the Trail Association and others that know them. And you suggested the preventative.
I didn't suggest. Well, I guess I strongly suggested. But if you listen to the tape, you'll hear me say. Right.
Go back and listen to the tape. I would, uh, who made the motion? Do you want to vote on the motion or do you want to withdraw the motion either way?
Joe, Joe made the motion, seconded by Scott.
I don't want to withdraw the motion.
Okay.
I don't think that the change would alter the, what's already there.
Okay, so we're gonna vote on the motion. All those in favor of accepting the minutes of May 18th, 2023?
Aye.
Aye.
All those not in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
There you go.
So.
We go back to revision.
Two out of four.
Two out of four.
Two out of four. That's a minute.
Okay, then.
Okay, um. Guess we have to wait to 8:30 for the town administrator's report.
It's, it's 8:30 in Nova Scotia.
Okay, 8:30 Nova Scotia. Jeannie, you're up.
Under my weekly update, I have, uh, three, actually listed three action items. One has to do with the let abatement services agreement from L and R Let Abatement. They, if you recall, they were hired to do the work. They stopped after two hours, two or three hours. And refused to do any more of the work. So because everything happened so fast and we wanted to get in there and get it resolved, the board didn't sign the agreement and she would like the agreement signed, um, just for paperwork purposes.
Do I make a motion that Jeannie sign the agreement?
Second.
Not seconding it. All right.
What is the agreement?
Motion.
It was in the, it's in the folder.
Right in the.
To be signed folder.
In the green folder, John, that's underneath here.
Anybody have a brief synopsis of it?
It's the.
No.
The red folder.
They said.
It's in the red folder.
It's in the red folder.
Right, the red folder, John.
Their work was incomplete. Does this agreement reflect that?
Yes.
Yes.
So we haven't paid them in full. We only paid them for the work that was done.
Correct.
And they're not asking for anymore?
No.
No. Yeah, it's just.
Did you read it?
Yeah, it's handling what they did.
They did?
Yeah.
They left and they're not coming back.
Yeah.
Right.
Is there an amount in here?
2,200.
Oh, so that's what it is?
Yeah.
For, for what they did so far?
It's, they're not coming back.
They won't be doing anymore.
That's it.
We just signed off on the new one tonight.
Right.
Approved the new one.
I believe it was in the manifest.
It was.
I had a motion.
It's only one.
They're right there.
The non-public right here.
There's space for two signatures on it.
Look at the first FYI.
Signature line.
Look at the first FYI.
Oh, I see the other one's contractor.
First FYI.
Yes, it is.
Saw it and I opened it up.
Yeah. All right, a motion has been made and seconded for Jeannie to sign the let abatement service agreement. All those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next, Jeannie.
Lakes Region Planning Commission is planning their annual meeting and awards night on Monday, June 26th from 4:30 to 8:00. It's on renewable energy in the Lakes Region. And, um, just asking the board, if you want to attend, let me know and I can sign you up. I did get an email today from Jane Alden, saying that she would like to attend that meeting and, uh, a class for trustees of the trust fund. And wanted to know if she should pay for the two functions and then request reimbursement from the town or should she have the town billed?
Are you, are you gonna attend this because you're one of the representatives?
I can if the board wants me to.
Well, I would.
But if, if she is.
Who's the other?
I, Jane Alden.
Oh, Jane.
Jane and Jeannie. I would suggest both of them. That would be my suggestion. Anybody else?
Agreed.
Agree, agree. And the town would pay.
Unless you have something. It coincides with a vacation or something.
So, um, I just thought you and Joe being on the Energy Committee might want to attend. That's, that was.
What day is it?
Monday, the 26th.
Monday, the 26th.
Mondays are not good for me right now.
It's right at Church Landing. You can walk up the hill.
Is it at Church Landing?
It's what it says, right there, Monday.
I didn't read it.
It's okay.
Uh, what time?
4:30.
4:30 to 8:00.
I'll, I'll, I'll go. It's always.
It starts at 4:30. The meeting starts at 5:30.
You can take something.
The dinner starts at 6:00.
Like Superman.
The keynote speaker is at 7:15.
They don't have any phone booths up there.
So.
Bathroom. Be down.
You're gonna go?
Yeah.
And Joe, yes or no?
I'm gonna try.
It's 26.
If, if I have to pay money to go, then no, I'm not gonna go. Uh, I'll be in Meredith that day, but I'll be dressed after 10 hours in a kitchen. So that's not conducive. I've been to those before and.
So just to confirm what you just said, if, if you have to pay, you're not going to go. We are paying for Jane and we are paying for.
We're paying for people that go selectmen as well, but you know, uh.
Was it 4:00 PM?
4:30. But, uh, Joe, she needs to make a reservation.
Okay.
Scott, you gonna go? No, okay.
All right. And, um, for, uh, Jane, we, we will just pay for her class. She'll ask them to bill us, correct?
Is it a town, is it an NHMA class?
She doesn't say. It just says a trustees, class for trustees. I would guess it is. I don't know.
Then they just automatically bill us, right?
Uh, yeah, she puts it down that way.
All right.
Okay.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. So I forwarded the selectman a clean version of the Tilton Northfield Aqueduct Company's proposed agreement with the town for the Academy Street Project. I also forwarded a copy to Primex for review and comment. And I just asked the board review that and be prepared to decide the next time you meet.
Where are we at for, uh, did everybody read it or no?
I did.
You did? You did?
Yep.
You did? John, did you read the agreement?
Yes.
Okay.
So the only comment, I did hear back from Mike Ricker. And he suggested that the, the agreement reflect our limits of liability that are covered through Primex. So whatever that is, is what would be covered and anything beyond that would not be.
Did, um, what is your, in, in Tim's opinion of the agreement, were you okay with it?
Well, uh, Primex is our insurer. They also happen to be the insurer for the water district.
Interesting.
I think if Tim were here, he'd tell you, no, just, we should not be taking on any, you know, any, uh, liability. I feel like, uh, Mike Ricker is, is looking out for the towns. I thought it was a good, uh, solution, um, his recommendation, which is to just put language in the contract that limits ours liability to what we have for coverage.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Yeah, makes sense. But I, I've read it. I'm okay with it the way, you know, the clean copy. Do you have any objections to it, anybody?
I know, but we should wait and see what the water district has to say.
Well, they sent it to us.
Well, they're, so the water district is happy with it.
Yes, because this is what they sent us.
Right.
They sent the requested corrections that we had from the last meeting with them.
Right, but I didn't, you know.
Yeah.
But, so now we're gonna add this language. Do they know that?
So, no, so we send it, if we're okay with that, and then adding that language, if we're okay with the rest of it, add the language, send it back to them and say, we're okay with this. We're just adding this one little piece. And then it's good to go and Kevin can start with the project.
Oh, we have to sign it?
Yeah.
Yes.
We could do that in two weeks.
Yep, I agree.
Instead of waiting for two weeks and then two weeks after that.
Good point.
Um, three weeks, which is fourth and July week, so it could be four or five weeks.
Well, I'm gonna talk about that in a second. But go ahead.
Okay.
Yep.
On to the next thing. So not on the list, but I did want to talk to you about it, Tilton Island Park. Remember I wrote a grant which was successful in getting, um, to have a historic landscape plan, um, created for Tilton Island Park. And David Kraus has done the survey work and, which was part of this grant. And, uh, Cindy Brockway, who is the historic landscape architect, um, has, let me see, she says, she's gonna have a draft design done to share with you and the community. Can you tell me how you'd like to roll out the community involvement because I told her that was important? She, she asked, should I share this with a small group of staff, selectmen or committee chairs first and then make changes based on their feedback? And then share with the public or launch the public sharing right away? I'm happy to do either. She just wants to get the meetings booked.
I would take selectmen and a staff first.
Okay.
Anyone? Yep.
Sure.
That's consensus. Do we, do, do we have?
At a regular meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Do we have a draft of, um, do we have the, uh, survey that he did?
I don't have it yet.
Okay.
But I think he's just about done with it.
Okay.
And that, that will also help us with the Land and Water Conservation Fund grant because there's gonna be, there's gonna be requirements for that as well. You saw the FYI about, um, Ernie's.
Yes.
And the signs, the parking signs. Vince Peratori, um, thank you very much, donated his time and expertise to design, build the signs. He's gonna be delivering them this week and Kevin will be installing them. We met with Vince last week to talk about the installation process. And then the last thing I have is the, you should have it in your packet. I don't know if the board is interested in weighing in on this or not, so I put it in your packet. One of the things the Economic Development Committee wanted to do with all those trees removed is put flower barrels in, not every space because there are 16 spaces. We've got 10 barrels we want. We've got 10 barrels we want to purchase. You should have this in your packet.
It's in the back.
Didn't know if you had a preference on which one of these. We have, thanks to Detective Murray, she has already gotten five sponsors, we're getting all sponsors to pay for these flower barrels, and she's already gotten five. That was just today.
And how many do you get, how many total? Where are these going all along?
Just on, on the, I think we, I might have mentioned this before, on the
North side.
North side, because the south side's going to be paved this summer. And it'll be widened and evened out and then we'll do them next year.
How much are they?
$500 a piece. They are self-watering, so you, and I think there are specifications, I think I provided that for you, so you, you just fill it up. It's like has cavity around it and in the bottom. And it self-wicks up. And I think it's like every two or three weeks you have to fill it.
I like the first one, I don't, anybody have a preference?
I like the first one, the rolled rim.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One?
I like.
Medium rolled rim.
Medium rolled rim.
How many total we getting?
10.
Bet the town's not paying for them, right?
Would.
I like that.
Liz got, Liz went out. And.
Well, I heard she had five. But not.
Oh, she just got five today.
In one day.
You're not done yet.
No.
That's fine.
Just started.
Yep. Which one?
I had a question, so if they're $500 each, can we get people to sponsor light posts? And just put the lights in?
Eventually.
You know, it's a buying $500 planters where the lights are going to go and then get rid of the plants, put the lights there and hang plants on it.
Well, are you talking about lamp posts? Well, those are much more expensive than $500, and I don't know that we will always be able to use the flower barrels. Once the lamp posts get at some point when we can raise that money, but lamp posts are.
That's a great idea, but how much is a lamp post? Approximately?
Well, I think we paid $36,000 for the five. So.
That's with the wiring and installation? So is it, oh, because we still have to put in the footing?
Right.
We got the wiring, we just don't have the footing.
Right.
Where did the money for the lamp posts come from?
We didn't raise inappropriate.
So roundabout, it's taxpayer money. Just gave the federal government.
It's federal.
Don't care.
I'd like the, the fact that we're beautifying downtown.
I care.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, so everybody, a medium rolled rim or?
Which one do you look then?
Urban Base 31. There's two pages, John.
What do you think, Genie? What do you think?
I actually picked the medium rolled rim. Tim and, Tim liked this one, the other one.
Tim's an IT guy, he likes that modern looking stuff.
I think the wider base is going to be more stable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My decision's not to get involved in colors or flower.
Medium rolled rim is the consensus.
Style is fine, color.
All right.
Handling the color. Yeah. Those are great.
That's it?
Yeah.
All right, I have one other thing under new business. And that is, there's five, Thursday, there's five weeks in June. On the, that means we're going to go at the end of June, three weeks without a meeting unless we meet on June 29th. We can have that meeting as a evaluation day, night. They all due July 1st.
So one of the things is if the next meeting would be right after July, the week of July 4th too. And that's when our normally scheduled meeting is, so we may want even a lot of times people aren't off anybody else's plans or something, but in the past, we've been able to skip the July 4th.
I think with all that's going on in Town Hall, I don't think we should have three weeks before we have a meeting. So whatever we need to do.
Yep.
So we'll do.
Perhaps two weeks, maybe.
The 29th?
The 29th, then we'll.
And then two weeks.
And then.
And then one week is the fourth, meaning of the sixth, I believe.
It's the sixth, the week of the fourth is going to be the first, so we would do the 29th and then the sixth.
The 20th.
And then the 20th. Depending on how it goes on, on next meeting.
Well, we could all, if we get everything accomplished, we don't need it, we can you know, on the 29th, so we don't.
On the 15th, we can decide whether or not you want to just forego the July 6th and have the 13th, or and do the 13th and 27th, and that screws everything up though. So we'll just stick with it. Six, 6th and the 20th.
Because on the 15th, you've got, you've got the pines coming in, you've got the chief is doing his reviews.
Yeah, okay.
You're talking about with Heather, the E R.
Oh, yeah, the, the
So the 15th is.
The rental assistance thing.
The 29th, you're going to need that for, for the reviews for the other people.
Okay, so everybody in favor of June 29th, and we'll do that. Are you doing Genie's review?
Thought we, I think we had talked about.
We're doing, I know we're doing the chiefs together, but I didn't know if we're doing.
You want to do, just do both together?
We'll do both together, okay. I've started the chiefs already, I'm ready to turn it over probably to you a little bit. Okay. So.
I imagine those will be sent out to the rest of the board before they're.
Before, right, that's what we all agreed on, for everybody.
Shared.
Yeah, for everybody.
Well, you're not getting email their reviews, right?
Nope. Do it in a non-public.
Once it's done, we can either stop in the office and look. Actually, that might be hard. Because the office might be anywhere.
Yeah, wherever.
We'll meet at, we'll meet at the dumpster.
We'll work it out.
We'll meet at Diane's and have coffee.
There you go. Let's meet over here at Al's and.
Oh, beer. I don't drink, but that's all right, I'll come with you. All right, so. Is there any other business to come before us in a public meeting? So.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Time being, 25 minutes of eight. Goodness.